Anyway, we should call our meeting to order at 6:05.
6:05.
Yes.
Is there any agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
There is.
Do you want me to make some copies, Bill?
Yes, and mine's all written over with notes. Sure, Chris is. I'll give them mine. That'd be great.
I can go make some copies.
Thanks.
Unfortunately, we have another.
You want to sign in here too?
Yeah. Actually, we can get it over here.
I think Michelle. Do you know who said Michelle?
It's just the three of you?
Yeah.
No, you won't. For with Jerome. Yep. Okay. So...
Sorry.
All right, 1.1, reception of guests, so welcome to our meeting. Thanks for coming, everybody, in the sunny afternoon. Does anyone have agenda revisions tonight? Dorothy, did you want to add something to the agenda?
Well, yes, a couple things, actually. I wanted to have a discussion about hiring of Brian Monahan.
Yep.
And I also...
Would that go in the executive?
Can you say that name again, Dorothy, talk about it there?
Monahan, M-O-N-A-G-H-A-N.
To search for superintendent?
Oh, no.
No.
No, sorry.
This is the legal advisor.
Oh, sorry, I got mixed up.
That's okay. And the other thing was, I want to get a timeframe or discuss what we're going to do with the fund balance. What's the timeframe, when we have to have that decision and vote it on?
Okay. So let's add to... Well, we have 3.4 is the Act 46 update. Could we put in there?
The legal advisor?
Does it make sense to put in there the legal advisor?
No, because that's not Act 46, that's with those documents.
Okay, so let's say, so we'll make a 3.5?
All right.
Okay, legal advisor. And then 3.6, discuss the fund balance?
Maybe that can be discussed during the finance one? Would that work, get everything okay?
Oh, in the reports?
We can do it there, or... Yeah.
I just want to make sure we don't lose track of it.
Yeah, I think you shouldn't lose track of it.
Okay, so let's do it as part of 4.2 when we're looking at our finances.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Why didn't this end up on the agenda? It was requested to be on it.
Was there something?
There was a request that went in to have the legal advisor, this whole issue, on the agenda?
So, Rick, I'm sorry, it didn't get adjusted in the past two days. We knew we were doing this, I just didn't...
Okay, I mean, but if we, this came up in the past two days, that's why we were... It was fairly important to us to get it done. So if we put something out there, even if it's the last minute, it needs to get on there? I know it's inconvenient, but that's important business. We'll have to call another meeting possibly, you know, to...
There wasn't any, you should have asked for a discussion item. We've adjusted them before, Rick, so...
I thought we asked for it on the action agenda as well, but I don't believe that will get on.
You can, and you can put things on the action agenda if you want.
One meeting?
Okay, so, action agenda. We could add a 5.2 to approve...
Yes.
The legal advice. Okay, depending on our discussion. Okay, so we've added 3.5, discuss a legal advisor.
5.2.
And 5.2...
Approve.
Approve.
And then finance has the fund balance wrapped in it?
Yes. Thanks, Michelle. Okay. Any other revisions? All right. Public comments and correspondence, anybody have news from the community to share? Do you want to ask our audience, anyone to share at the beginning?
What?
Our guests.
Oh, I thought they sort of came in under public comments and correspondence, but if you would like to make some public comments and correspondence, we'd love to hear.
Public comments before we get into our agenda? You can also have time to speak after we discuss each item, if you want to contribute. Okay? Thanks. So, 2.0, the consent agenda. So 2.1 is to approve the minutes of March 21 and March 27.
Have you found any, Katie, that go into this?
Only Tommy, no. Not good. Thanks.
Okay, I move to accept March 21st and March 27th minutes, approve them.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes? If you say aye.
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 Great. Okay, 3.0, discussion agenda. So 3.1 is a reflection on school district meetings. I don't know what...
So Susan had said that that was to talk about the meeting, the March meeting? No, you've already done that one, so it would be just the meeting from Tuesday night.
Okay. Right, because we already talked about Tommy there.
Right.
So... Okay. All right, I don't think...
There were over 40, some odd people there. And I was surprised, on such a nice night and such hoopy roads. And they were very interested and very involved. And they were glad that we were doing that.
Yeah, I was really impressed with that, too. A strong turnout for that meeting and a very, you know, very strong backing, too, for the efforts we're taking.
And reiterated at the end that they wanted us to do all we could do to prevent consolidation.
Continue on the path of resistance.
Better way to put it.
Okay. Any further discussions? All right, so 3.2, staffing update.
So I think you've been aware that Kelly McMartin is, as we had a staff member leaving, had a chance to come back, and she's accepted that. She'll be in the 5, 6 area, working with Damian there. And, but we still have some need for some behavioral support, as Kat talked to you about in the previous meetings. It is something we're probably going to need to have more discussions about in this. Kat spends quite a bit of her time on student issues right now. And that's taking away from other work that she should be doing in the building.
So where she's being behavior is...
Yes.
On top of being principled.
On top of being principled. And so that's going to need to, we're going to need to keep working on that. I know that it's one of the things that we've looked at within the budget. Is that something that's able to be covered within the budget for next year? And it's not fully there. I mean, there's a little bit of money, but not a lot of money. So that's something we're going to have to continue to talk about, that she needs that support. It may be hard to do with our current staffing configuration.
Okay.
Do we have, I don't know whether the word is numbers or the number of children who need support of any kind, behavior as well as IEPs and so forth? Is that general number in regard to the total population staying the same, going up, going down? Where are we, do we know?
I don't know, off the top of my head, Dorothy, to give you a comparison.
I have a feeling for it.
I have a feeling that it's going up some. Yep. I don't keep track of those numbers the way Kat does for your building.
Right, and we've changed our structure of support in the building somewhat.
Yeah, and that's, I think, working for what we expected. It's just that there's some other needs that are coming up that weren't anticipated.
Okay.
Both in number and severity.
And are we talking about hiring a one-on-one? Or we're talking more about a general person in the building?
A general person in the building.
Helping with situations with all students?
General person in the building with all students.
Don't necessarily have an IEP or five-year program?
Yeah, this is not a special education, this is a general education cost.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We've been trying to find a way to do it within the existing budget or the existing personnel structure. It's not been easy to do.
Okay, because she did have some ideas.
She did, and if you wanted to talk about those ideas, I'd have to go into executive session, because I'd be discussing personnel.
Right. Do you think we need to do that tonight, or we should wait because she's working and she's in the middle of working on it?
She said she was comfortable with me going into the executive session and tell you what's going on with some of the ideas she had told you in the previous executive session.
Do we want to add that to the end of the meeting? Okay. So...
So after the board communication, just go into executive session?
Yeah, we'll end the session, yeah.
Okay.
To discuss...
Personnel issues.
Personal.
Okay. Anything else on staffing update?
I think, well, I'll give this here, she would have given, Kat, you probably would have given it in her administrative report, but she really wants to thank the community, she's been hearing that and helped with getting some support from Plainfield Health Center and supporting the staff here and some of the work they've been doing.
Is that the woman who's been coming and doing coaching?
Not yet.
Okay.
That's a different piece.
What, did I miss that?
Kat's talked to you about the supports of the staff and some of the secondary trauma effects.
Okay.
And there's been, Scott Bassi just sits on the Plainfield Health Center board, and he was very helpful.
Denise does, too.
Oh, Denise, you do, too? Thank you, Denise. And helpful in starting to get some things going to help the staff here.
Yeah, we brought it up at a board meeting, so...
Thank you.
Oh, good.
So that's getting going. It hasn't started yet, but it's going a little faster.
Staff support, more than anything, right?
Yeah, for the staff, they call it secondary trauma. So the trauma they're experiencing from encountering the trauma of the kids, right?
Yeah.
You don't know what you're gonna do, it'll cost...
She's a crow. Never felt more like a fat kid than trying to get into a brownie.
Any other questions about... Actually, while we're talking about staffing, it's just reminded me, there was one important thing in the minutes. Beth Downing, we spelled her name wrong.
Okay.
Okay. Make sure we do that. Any other questions about staffing update? Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome. And this informed me about staffing a little bit, we'll go on to the next item, around small schools grant.
Great, so the small schools grant.
Yeah, so for the current budget that was adopted, the small schools grant is anticipated at about, is budgeted at about $65,000. With the grant that Laura's projecting, we think we're in the $95,000 to $100,000 that we'll receive next year. So there should be some extra revenue there, but we would need authorization to go beyond the bottom line. And so when we talk about supports needed for behavior, there's a possible revenue area.
Okay.
We don't know exactly, because that doesn't get set until the end of the legislative session, based on, or is it base support per pupil gets set? You guys all know that.
Yeah.
But there's some relativity in all of this, but Laura's estimations are usually pretty good, so...
It's good that they can bet, though.
What?
As good as they can bet, she makes...
Yeah, she's usually within a few percent of error, so go take her estimation. So I know that you guys had asked about that, what was the difference there?
Right, I mean, to ask Kat to think of some priorities, so it's like, that's the priority.
Right, I would tell you from my conversation with Kat, this is her priority right now. Supports for students.
That's the number one priority, so...
Yeah, so there's about $30,000 to $35,000, we're thinking, will be in the extra revenue in that area.
But if it's not on the bottom line of the budget?
You have to authorize it to go beyond...
Oh, okay.
Beyond the...
To authorize to overspend the budget, to basically go into fund balance.
You can't, yeah, you always authorize us to go into fund balance. The question is, and I don't know, the next question I would anticipate is, I don't know how that gets done this year, if there is a merger. I don't, I just don't know the answer. But I think if this board were to pass it, I would assume that that would be honored. Yeah, it's, I just don't know, Rick, exactly how that works.
I mean, theoretically, if it's a merger, it goes into the big pot, and we don't necessarily get it all.
Theory, and technically, yes, but I think with the tone of the folks that are on the board, that are going for election, I think it would be honored.
Yep.
I think it would be honored.
Great. Do we want to, well, we'll continue to follow up with Kat about the small schools grant.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we'll keep, we'll give you a better, we'll be giving you better projections as we go, as we know. We won't really know anything until the end of the legislative session at this point.
So when, wouldn't we take, we'll take action on this in June, or...
Yeah, I would say June's probably your best place to take act. I would say, actually, to take action on the author, it's the authorization, you know, hey, we probably would want to do it in two steps, usually we would do it in one. But go ahead and go hire, you know, start advertising to hire someone for a different position. We'll talk more after the executive session on that.
Well, and we have another board meeting in May.
Right, you have a May and a June, June 5.
We might, yeah.
Yeah, we have...
And you may have others you need to have, so...
Yeah.
Okay. So we should put that on future agenda? Okay. Anything further on the small schools grant? So 3.4 is Act 46 update?
I don't think... We had the organizational meeting.
And then tonight was a meeting...
We have the petitions for people running for the board. We had a second transition board meeting. And that's where we are, and the second transition board has found out they have a lot of work to do, and a lot of hard decisions to make, but we'll be able to do it, I'm sure.
They are going to try to pull together a public forum?
Oh, that's right, and...
For to meet the candidates?
The League of Women Voters and Susan Clark have suggested it, and we agreed with it. And so Scott and I have been tasked with coordinating with the women's...
League?
League of Voters.
League of Women Voters.
So that, and we're hoping that will happen May 9. We don't know for sure.
Okay.
You're just doing that at U 32, then?
We will have it, well, we think we're having it...
Are you going to do it at each school?
We don't have time to do a voter thing at each school. We want, U 32 is a natural place, because we're all five towns. And our problem now is making sure that Bill can find out if we have a space or what space we'll get to use.
That will be important, too, because we're all voting on all candidates, so we probably won't know the people from all the other towns, so...
And there's also a plan to have a little 150-word piece about candidates sending themselves. I don't know who decided that's going to do, but that will be on the Washington Central website, or the...
It'll be on the Washington Central website.
It'll be on the Washington Central website.
It'd be nice if it was posted someplace else, that's more easy to access.
I think we should put it on the town website, too.
Well, we can ask the town clerks to put it on their websites and...
Or at least a link.
And then link to Front Bush Farm, of course, so people can...
Right, and yes, they're going to do, Matt will write an announcement about it that will go on all the front bush farm.
Yeah, it's just so hard to find anything on the other website.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes if you put the specific, give people the specific link, it works. Not just go to the website.
Right.
Yep.
And that's what I know about Act 46.
Thank you.
That's a great ending.
I think you know more than that, but...
Yes.
It's all in hold right now, wait, wait and see.
Okay, that's where we are. And then Bill sent us the update on where they are with budgeting and meeting.
Yeah, we sent that, we sent it to the transition board, we sent it to everybody, so everyone had that. All right. We just finished the meeting of the transition board. Two different pieces we need to do through.
Okay. I think we're ready for 3.5, discuss a legal advisor. So Dorothy contacted...
I contacted Brian Monahan. He used to work at the League of Cities and Towns years ago. I knew him when I was a zoning administrator. And he has a law firm in Burlington with a few other lawyers there. And I talked to him, and he said he could help us. I sent him all the information about the fact that we needed to get together with the select board and Jim Barlow to have wording on these documents accurate and the dates and get together for that meeting. And I sent him a list of meeting times. And I'm going to pass, I didn't have time, I got this late, so I couldn't send it to everybody, but this is his, oh, this is his, called a representation agreement. And it's still...
You did something.
The regular stuff that goes, can I, let me see if, we're needing another one, I can email one to you, is that right? The interesting thing is, I don't know
How long's that done?
How much other lawyers have cost, but his fee is $165 an hour.
That's $135.
No, $135 for the, for the associates. You need, I've got one for you, I'll send it. So we, I also sent him a list of dates that were not good. Well, you might as well ahead of time. And we'll just have to get together with the select board and him, I guess, and Jim to pick a date when we can have a warrant meeting for both boards.
It might have to be a special meeting on both boards' parts.
Right, yeah, I'm assuming it will, one or the other. More likely us than you.
I don't know.
Because your meetings are full.
Right.
So I guess what we need to do is decide, you know, if we want to go with Mr. Monahan. He is a municipal lawyer, he is well versed, and I can give you his, I can email you his website, which tells you all the various cases he's had, what he takes care of. And I think this is, the agreement is very narrow. It will only cover this specific thing. Oh, when I emailed him, I also, I emailed him all the documents, the memo that we had gotten from Scott Cameron, and it was one with, I guess the calendar was the other thing. The fourth thing I emailed, I think it was the calendar. So we have to make that decision later on at the action agenda, but I can answer any questions. I used him when he was at the League of Cities and Towns. He's a very reasonable, thoughtful person, fairly easy to talk to. And I think it, I would be very comfortable making sure this is all straightforward. And if we have to warn another meeting to have the warning different, or... I was not comfortable with the fact that what we asked people to vote on were actual drafts, there weren't any dates in them. So I'm thinking maybe...
Can you imagine...
There were, seemed to be some blanks. And I didn't know if those needed to have been filled in before we asked them to vote on it.
Oh, that's...
That's where you sign it, but, yeah, do you sign it before or after?
After it's resolved by the voters.
Okay.
Yeah.
You couldn't sign it before, or was it all voters?
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Otherwise, a meeting would have been necessary.
But since we labeled as a draft, I want to make sure that it's...
So it's a draft, so Dorothy, just in any documents we've done, we haven't done a lot of these. One, two, it's always drafted until it's approved by the voters, the way Scott's signed it, so to be. So then you have a piece that comes out after...
That's signed.
That's signed. So I don't...
You don't think, well...
You don't think you need to worry about the draft piece on it?
Right, okay.
Yeah, I think the only reason we need to warn another meeting is if Scott Cameron finds that...
So I'm not going to have Scott do any more, you decide who you want to do this, okay?
Or if we find that the way we amended to authorize the school board is in fact not proper, which it looks like it is by the statute, but we just want to double check to make sure.
So can I, Katie, can I just give them the information? I talked to Scott today, he had surgery yesterday. So he was good enough to call me back today and say, Bill, what's up? I thought we were all ready to go, so we'd go through that meeting and it'd be all set. Because he had worked with Jim Barlow on putting together the documents. They had worked together on that.
Ah, the documents, but I think not the warning, that was the problem, not the...
Right, the warning was the problem.
Not the wording for the warning.
Okay.
That was, that ended up to be the problem.
But we made, we amended...
I understand, I understand. And Scott doesn't know, I mean, he literally doesn't know. So it could be fine with what's done. And you don't have to do any more district meetings. But he didn't know, doesn't know the answer either way. And if you're going to have another attorney work on this, you should move everything over to that attorney. Or you can keep Scott doing the work, who's already got time invested in it. It's totally up to you guys. I don't think it's going to bother Scott, it's not going to bother me. My intent of everything we were doing was to get this thing done.
Right.
And I think, Dorothy, you and I talked about that enough, so it's how you want to do it, totally up to you. But I just, I want to see it solid. And the solid piece, when I talked to Scott, was we just don't know with that amendment that was done at the meeting, if that's going to require another meeting or not. Just don't know the answer. As of today, January 25, or April 25.
You're going back, you're going backwards. Or forward, I don't know which one you're doing.
I meant April, April, it's not January, I just lost the snow in my yard, three or four days ago, so I thought it was.
I know.
I still have snow.
So my question is to my fellow board members is, you know, we did send, we did in fact send these documents to Scott Cameron. He did in fact give us his legal advice, which we did send to Jim Barlow. So I don't understand, we have consulted with an attorney who has looked at these documents on our behalf and has given us an opinion. I don't know, do we need to go to a second attorney and have a second opinion on these documents?
I think the conversation the other night was, or the other day, was about, you know, the legality of what we were doing, right? And there was a question about that. And I personally think it's smart to go and get an outside, not somebody that's working for the SU. And I know Scott really well, I trust him a lot, but, I mean, personally, my trust hasn't gone real far with Leopold or... You know, I don't know whose, their interests here, you know, they're kind of opposing, and so I...
Leopold has not touched this at all, this is all...
Well, I get it, I get it, but I'm talking about that in the context of the bigger, my personal trust isn't always there, that the interests of Calis are in mind.
Okay. But Scott Cameron did not say there was any problem with the legality of the documents, right?
Right.
Well, there's the process, right?
Now, but I think because we made the amendments, we are in a position where we have to, and I think Jim especially would feel comfortable, more comfortable, having us, that's the message I got, that he felt would feel more comfortable if the two boards met. It wouldn't be very long if everything is A-OK. And I personally would like to engage Brian Monahan.
Just to have another...
Or if we just have another opinion.
A board representative representing our board.
Yep.
Because Jim Barlow represents the town, and... Cause Jim Barlow represents the town and he doesn't want it.
And he said no, he would not represent the school board.
Which I understand, he can't represent both sides, but we did have a lawyer, Scott Cameron looked at it.
I think it's in your best interest to have.
I, I think it would be in our best interest and to have, hopefully we don't have to consolidate, but to have another lawyer we can call on when we need some advice if we want to, for our particular board. It never hurts to have someone you know and have been through an issue with them, to kinda know how, where it is. And that's, but we're not at the action time now, so I think.
But this is the discussion.
This is the discussion.
Chris, what, did you have a comment?
I have two, I think. The first one is, and I really don't know the answer to it, which I've asked in the question. Do we, or have we, do we assume, or is there some sort of issue with the document?
That's presented? Not the document, our amendments to the warning.
So, so, I just wanna be clear, so we, we wanna hire a private counsel to get us out of a mess that we created by amending, by amending the warning?
No.
No, we didn't make a.
I, I'm, I'm just, I really don't know.
Yeah, this is, I think.
We're hiring private counsel to review the three documents. So that goes back to Chris's first question, is there a problem?
Do we think there's a problem with those three documents? Like, I don't, I just don't know.
This is a surety, this is done, you know, the advice of the, the town's lawyer too, you know, Kevin, somebody from the school board side, our own counsel to, you have a second opinion on it. It's kind of a, it's, at the very least, it's kind of a protocol review. You don't, I mean, it's best in that legal review if you've got a couple of opinions, you know, on this, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if there was, if there was, if we had a problem, we were looking to research or if it was just a general review.
We just wanna, we need to make sure that we do this correctly, so that that doesn't create a legal problem later if we.
So we have to know, excuse me, I shouldn't interrupt.
Okay, so we're looking at, what we're discussing is hiring Brian Monahan and his firm to review the three legal documents on behalf of the Calis board to enter into this agreement with the town of Calis.
As well as.
At the warrant.
The warrant.
As well as the warrant.
Warrant.
Okay.
Warranting language, they invented, okay, we got some questions.
Okay.
I think what this does is we don't wanna get to a meeting, a joint meeting. And the town is represented and we can ask our attorney questions, and then you folks have questions, and there's nobody there to answer them on your behalf or for you from a legal perspective. And we don't want to have this, we wanna have this meeting and get it done and not drag it out. So if we get to a meeting, a joint meeting, and you don't have legal representation, then that's, then that, then you're stuck.
Okay, so we're talking about having an attorney to represent us during a specific meeting time.
Well, before and, and in advance, he's reviewing these.
Right, right.
Okay, John?
Right, just to be clear, the, the town is a separate entity from the town's school district, right? Just kinda walk through this, if not only for my sake. We have hired an attorney, we've consulted with an attorney, we've done that in executive session, and we've also had conversations with you all. We've presented the documents, our attorney developed them. Theoretically, when, if you did a real estate, any real estate transaction, you're buying a house from someone down the road, you always have counsel. You could, it could be your aunt Till, who you love to death. You still always have your own legal representation to advise you as to the pluses and minuses of the proposed transaction and the documents leading toward that.
Which we did.
So, so.
So we got that.
So, so.
Right.
So you, the idea of this district, which is not the supervisory union, right? Supervisory union is a separate entity from the Calis School District. There will be a merger and it'll be one district. That's not yet happened. And for that reason, this is, needs to happen prior to that merger. That supervisory union is made up of a number of towns, which each have particular interests. And then there are the particular interests of the supervisory union unto itself. So for instance, Scott Cameron, he's the attorney, he's beholden to the supervisory union. So if the chair of the supervisory union says, I don't like this, what Calis is doing, please meet with me in my office at my place of business, Mr. Kimball, please come along. And they could meet in executive session and have discussions about how to, not saying this is what would happen, about how to rework something that might be more favorable to the other interests represented at that supervisory union. There's nothing wrong with that, but what's wrong with that is if he's also your counsel. In fact, it puts Scott Cameron in a very difficult legal position. I would be surprised, I'm actually surprised he continues to serve wearing these two hats. You, this town is a separate entity from the supervisory union. You are a member of the, the larger group. You are not a representative of the larger group, you are a member of that. And Scott Cameron represents the larger group, he is not an attorney unique to your district. For that reason, I would strongly encourage you, as Jim Barlow was encouraging us to encourage you, to hire your own counsel to represent your interests. When you go into executive session, it's about your interests and your needs. We don't have to know. We, the select board might have an interest, I don't think so, that might vary from what you think is in the best interest of this school, and this school property and the future of it. You need to have that, that private conversation with your attorney. Those, that attorney needs to then have the freedom, at your authorization, to have a conversation with our attorney. And, and then if we're all together and we have a conversation, you might have a question, you don't feel comfortable right out there expressing. You might wanna say, we'd like to have a private conversation with our attorney. These are all the parts and the interplay that happens. There's a problem with Scott Cameron doing it. I know he provided some level of service. I think you're really, it's not a good idea.
Well, this is an avoidance, plain and clear, it's just an avoidance of conflict of interest. And that's, you know, because it is the town of Calis. By getting rid of it, by going.
So to bring us back to where we are.
Let's finish that, cause let's.
No, no, I think I heard Scott though, he's, he said it very clearly. So I think where we are is, we consulted with Scott Cameron. We did get some feedback, there was no conflict. He did say he was interested in the potential imbalance with the other schools, but we also brought these documents to the other schools. We said, you are welcome to use this model. And Jim Barlow was really open about offering that, so I don't think that there's any sneaky imbalance happening there. It does sound like our board is interested in potentially retaining our, a second attorney to represent us in a meeting with the select board to finalize the process. I think that's where we are right now.
And, and I don't know, Jim, I don't know.
My brain.
Right.
My advice with you be whoever it is.
Right.
Whoever it is, so I'm not disparaging anyone, is that they have attorneys on staff that know Title sixteen. Cause education law is, it, this is where we seen it, and we've talked about this before. Municipal law and education law sometimes can get in conflict with each other. And that's, I get tripped up in that all the time. So I just wanna say, you're gonna need somebody that has that experience within their staff.
Right.
Cause she said he has municipal experience. And, and he may have education, so I'm not trying to disparage.
Yeah, I understand, there's municipal and there's municipal.
There's municipal, there's education.
Right, yeah, I get you. Well, education, the town, a, a school board is a municipality.
Right.
So municipal can cover school and town. And I, I can, I can check that out for sure.
Go with whom you like, I just, you should.
Yeah, oh, I think it's important.
You should ask those questions.
I think he would have said, if he didn't have that type of experience, he wouldn't have said, I'll take, I have no experience, but I'll try. Right. Attorney is not gonna do that.
Scott Cameron's real bailiwick is not education law.
It's personnel.
It's actually personnel.
It's contract.
I've worked with Scott for thirty years. His major interest is personnel.
And I know this, real estate is a big part of Monahan's.
Monahan, yeah, I think that's good advice, though, we'll just check and make sure.
Yeah.
Get there.
Nice to have a second opinion.
Then there, there was a second question that I had, which, I'm not sure, it's fine.
Go ahead.
No, this was all, this was exactly what I wanted to talk about, right? That was important for me to wrap my head around the whole process and idea and the whys and all that stuff. It was just great. And I appreciate the explanation. Second question is, and this probably is because I'm new to the board, really. How do we pay for our, our own attorney?
Right.
You have a line in your budget.
Okay.
That's for legal, for legal services.
Okay, so there's already some, some set of amount of money?
There's six different attorneys, depending on their specialty, as John was talking about, it depends on their area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
That answers that question.
I'm glad you brought that up, cause I was. Good.
That can be done.
So I was just like, oh, great, we're gonna, you know, potentially approve to have this attorney and then we can pay them.
Yeah, we're gonna pass the hat, we're gonna pass the hat.
You pay for him out of your budget.
Okay. All right, so we'll get back to that, on the action agenda. Okay. Thanks, everyone. So we are on to, where are we?
Reports.
Four point one.
Yes, reports to the board, four point one administration.
So Kat.
Billy and Kat.
Yeah. Well, I gave you part of her, Kat's report about the work, the successful work with the Pineville House owner now that's progressing along. She has her written report in here as well. She's been working a lot on configuration for next year. And the other thing that she really wanted me to highlight, it's in here under instructional coaching, that Ann Carter's been just really helpful to many of the staff here and there.
That's what I was thinking of, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's gone on really well with the staff and their math instruction. I actually saw some of that one day when I was in there and working with Cali.
And that will continue next year?
Yes, yep. Yep, that's, I mean, that's an S U Y.
I don't know if this is the place to ask, but last time, when Kat was here, she was telling us the, and maybe, I need to hold that what I was gonna say to executive session.
I think you might, yes.
Good touch.
If I was in some way, I know, I appreciate.
Great, so that's that?
Yep.
Cool.
This is where I jumped in, into bond buildings.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've, in the process of doing the septic system, ended up losing our engineers, but I acquired Don Marsh to pick up to do our annual inspection. I'm working on getting that done. We may not be in compliance with that because of the late, when I was informed that we had lost Dufrane. And with my conversations with Don, we're still working on trying to start it in the spring. There's still a lot of questions on the materials and the sand filter with the state, so that is.
How, how did we lose Dufrane? I mean, it's.
Because we started working with Don Marsh on.
On the sewer, okay.
On the sewer. And I thought he was being included, I thought Dufrane and Henry was being included and everything, and they weren't. And they got mad at us that, that, you know, we're doing business with you.
We're, we're gonna be fine, I mean, Don's.
Yeah, Don.
Don's in there.
Yeah, Don. I mean, I'm having to keep on him and, but, I think that's it at the moment as far as one with buildings that I wanted you guys to know about, so.
Thank you, that's.
And hopefully I can keep the heat off.
Yeah. Let's move forward, that's, you're good.
So we're still having to deal with the state over the material that we're replacing?
Yes, it's still, the state is still trying to make a final decision on. Because specs have changed from when this was originally put in to now, what their standards are, the material that's in there, they're not agreeing with that. We can put back in, but they can't find what they want to put in there that'll work. So they're going back and forth. So I, I think in the bottom, we're gonna end up with what we have in there right now.
Yeah, but I, I mean, Don's gonna take care of all that, that's why we hired him.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
That's why we hired him.
Okay, thanks, Chris. All right. Finance and fund balance.
And fund balance.
So your finance right now is, it hasn't, we're closing down the books right now. Sandy and Kat are closing down the year, we always do it right around the celebration. We ask people to.
Get there, yeah, I'm fine, I'm sorry, just have some probable layer.
We don't need you choking on.
Oh, I'm good, I'm good.
And so you will see next month and May, the newly updated, you were, I know you're all familiar with it. We do a September, January and a May update, unless there's something new that we don't expect. Things have been pretty normal this year. So that, this sheet hasn't been updated on page twelve since, since January, because we've been just running off the budget. There hasn't been anything new that's been anticipated that was, that wasn't in the budget that we need to come to you for. Page thirteen, you'll see the capital fund is pretty much where from all the bills have gone through from this year. So we're at seventy-five thousand five hundred. And you see the other three funds there, the one student activity, the food service. With the merger, I just wanna make sure you're all updated. We talked about some of this in transition, so Dorothy, this is twice for you. Okay, and Rick, cause you were there as well.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
But these funds will roll over with their intent. Right now, we're trying to figure out a cash flow issue. It doesn't mean, so I don't want you to be concerned that the Calis money's gonna be taken and go somewhere else. You've heard from me for the past six months, the money that's in the Calis capital fund is for the use of Calis. It's not for the use of any other building, that's what's the intended fund. And it says at law that all funds that are coming in designated, they have to stay for their purpose. Whether it's a capital fund, a student endowment, like East Montclair has a music endowment that gives support students any funds for music lessons or histories. So those all stay with their purposes. The piece that we're running into is if you read the memo that I sent to the transition board, is we're having a cash flow issue because of when the budget is being voted on.
The thirty day, basically.
Yeah, so it, it's, we're gonna have to figure that out. We might have to lend ourselves our own money and then put it back.
Right. It's kind of a temporary, temporary short term loan.
It's like saying, I'm taking out my savings account right now, or my checking account, once I put it back in the checking account, I get my paycheck, I'll put it back in the savings account. Maybe that's the best analogy to use.
But then in the end, now the fund balance isn't specified for anything.
No, but I'm hoping that in June, as I've said to you before, and I've heard you to say, let's keep this on the agenda, Dorothy, that that hundred and eight thousand, almost hundred and nine thousand, you're gonna have to leave some in there to clear bills. To, cause you, we're not gonna have, all the bills cleared on June thirtieth.
Okay.
Right.
But you can, and I think it's gonna be a two step. It's gonna be a motion at one point, and then I think we can find a way, Lori and I've been talking about this, once you go past June thirtieth, that this board, cause you still said, if there's a merger till December thirtieth.
Right.
We're trying to find a way that you can say, okay, whatever's left, cause all the bills have been paid, checks have cleared, cause it's ninety days to do that, the rest of it goes into the Calis building fund.
Yeah, the capital fund.
They gave capital fund, they call it building fund, but capital fund. Dorothy, I, I go back to my intent I said earlier, thinking of the people that are running for the merge board, I think they would all intend for that to happen.
I think so.
Is this, I mean, we could, isn't that, is that something we can build into that with some action, when we.
That's what I'm trying to find out, if there's, if there's a way.
To encumber it, more or less to.
I don't know if we can encumber, cause you're not gonna know the exact amount.
I get it.
Knew the exact amount, yes, I know how to do that, is without knowing the exact amount. And so.
You can't use the word remainder, huh?
Yeah.
You could ask your attorney. What wording to put in on.
That's another topic, and we, if, if we sign this, hire him, what we're hiring for is that specific thing.
That's a good question for you, yeah.
So I, I think the intent is there from every, all five elementary schools to do that.
Right.
And to use and put all that money into the building, the capital funds in each building. From, from there, from their general fund.
Right, the remaining balance.
Cause there hasn't, there hasn't been a board, this is the same conversation at the other four elementary. So it's not like you're gonna be fighting with one of them to say they're gonna do something else.
You're closing the expenses and then transferring the balance.
So the question, I think it's more about how do we do it?
It's mechanics, yeah, it's how to do it. And can it be, can it be foreordained for the dissolution of our power? And can it be, can it be fore ordained for the dissolution of our power, basically?
Well, that's, and you, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, is that you have authority over the F Y nineteen budget. So when does that money come over that's in the articles of agreement that does transfer, and how does that work? So we need to figure that out.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I think anyway, at any time, when I look at what's there, we're gonna know most of the bills before, so there might be a June, a late, last week, a June meeting.
Maybe we have a June twenty-seventh meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we're gonna move this.
Oh, that's when we used to have the, um, board retreat.
Finals.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll get more onto that.
Okay.
I think everyone's intent is to do.
That.
To do that.
Do we need, you know, do we need to start meeting every two weeks for the next coming, for the coming period, is there any reason? Are these monthly meetings frequent enough?
I mean, we're gonna have to have a special meeting.
Yeah, right, already in that window.
But, um. I don't think there's anything we urgently need to do between now and our May meeting. Is there something you were thinking of specifically?
No, I'm just, these, uh, issues keep kinda popping up, and we don't have a lot of time between now and June, I mean, the end of June. So the question, it's more of a.
I think, I mean, the, what do you mean by these issues, can you take that?
Well, just things like that, what we're arguing here with the, uh, with the sale of land, I, you know, and I don't know.
So that one I see.
If there are other.
I'm just trying to make sure we.
Are there gonna be other budget issues that we have to kind of address as a board and not cram into a single meeting? You know, in the end, will we get it up into June, or, you know, I, I mean, I'm fine with doing that if we need, if, if you've got some idea of decisions that this board will have to make between now and the end of June.
The fund balance is the biggest one for me, Rick.
So, and then.
About transferring from general fund to capital.
But I don't think us meeting in between is gonna help.
That.
I'm just, I'm putting it out there.
We'll have to wait for.
I just wanna make sure that we've.
And I, I.
We've got adequate time.
I wonder though, right, if there's some sort of, um. I don't know the word I'm gonna use, so I was trying to be all fancy, but, um, I don't know that there's anything between now and the next meeting, but there likely might be something. You know, we might, we might meet every week in June.
Yeah, yeah, quite possibly.
You know, and so.
I don't see that happening.
No, but I'm just saying.
Certainly, there's gonna be some, we have at least one special meeting.
But yeah, we, we will be meeting with the select board, we know that already.
I hope to have that in May.
Yeah, I would agree, I'd like to, I don't want that to be last minute.
We need to have that within the next.
Yeah.
By mid, before mid way, mid May.
Can I actually make a suggestion?
Yes.
That you do that as soon as possible, because if you, I hope you don't need another special district meeting.
Yeah.
Right, but if we did, we need.
With thirty days.
That's what I was thinking, so, you know, maybe we can, amongst us, before the end, and say.
I hope since I saw the minutes of Tuesday night, I was like, oh, I just hope we don't need to have another one. But I wanna make sure for you, so it's all.
Yep, well, I, I was thinking the same thing.
Dot, can I make a suggestion that you send, if you haven't already, um, Brian the warn, the warning, and then the minutes of the meeting?
I sent him the warning, that was the other thing I was, couldn't think about, I sent him, I sent him the warning, and I told him, I think I told him roughly how we, how we amended the warning.
I'm not sure the minutes have been published yet.
But I'll get, I, I'll get the.
Well, you just said they were.
Uh, yeah, I see it there.
I can, I, I can pull those, they'll be online, right?
Yeah, if they're not up there, yeah, they will be, I mean, I, I, if you, Dorothy, just send me an email, make sure.
Yeah.
Or I can send it directly to, to.
Brian.
I'm gonna do better if it came better from.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send, and I'll call him tomorrow and tell him that we have this timeframe.
Yeah.
And what, what does he have for days in the next week or ten days? And then match it up with what we can do.
Right.
That's right, and really define.
Better to ask him.
And where did you get those no dates, those are dates that are, the select board's already meeting, or we.
I got the, the, the select board was already meeting, and I used the, this thing that, um.
The bill sent?
None of the, bill sent around. All of meeting scheduled from April third until.
Okay.
June twenty-fifth. And so I knew for us what, when I couldn't be there or whatever. And, um, I just told him.
I saw that list of dates, and I thought, oh my goodness. And I, I said, is that right, these are the days we cannot meet?
Well, it even gets worse when you start throwing in the other school, put me to look at it, I mean, it's terrible.
Right.
Well.
Okay, thank you.
We can meet times, different times, right?
Well, that's why there was a transition meeting at four o'clock here, because they needed to have it, and they decided it was easier to have it here and go right into the mother meeting. And also, we're doing the same thing on the second, we're having a executive board meeting and then a transition board meeting. A lot of us are doubling up.
Right.
So.
Okay, so tomorrow morning, I, and I, and I, and I tweeted, sent me the minutes.
Any other questions about finance?
No.
I think that's pretty clear.
So executive committee, Dorothy, you told us some.
Well, I was just looking at the minutes from it. As when, as when we, um, talked a lot about the, the, um, meeting coming up, the, um, organization meeting, how that was fun to go. And also about the hunt for the, a new superintendent. Um, gave people permission to meet with, um, Mark Andrews and prepare a. An ad for a new superintendent. That's basically what we did.
For a temporary.
Temporary, one year superintendent, and I overheard Matthew tell somebody that we had three or four good applicants. That's all I know.
That's encouraging.
I was gonna ask that question, that is encouraging. I was nervous that there wasn't gonna be anybody.
Slightness.
There are always people in the world who wanna take on a challenge. Or this is a challenge.
It's a good district, no, it's a good district.
It's a good district and a challenge to get through a messy place.
Okay, thanks. So I think that the next, the policy committee and the school quality committee have not met.
They're on hold, they have not, yeah.
They're on hold.
And the negotiations committee can't.
Negotiations committee, I think Bill is gonna update us.
So you have an action agenda item for approve the E S P contract. And the negotiations committee of Susanna, Carl Wiki, Vera Fraser, and.
Tony.
Stephen Look, because they're representing the E S P, Romney and Doty are not covered by the E S P agreement. Their personnel never came into the association. So, um, the four schools are represented by those four, and met with the E S P leadership, um, on, on April second, first or second. And one night came to an agreement of a three point five percent salary increase, uh, for E S P. We've been trying to raise the lower.
I think people wanna know what E S P is.
Yeah, it's, sorry, education support personnel, so custodians, food service, parent educators.
And you said Doty and.
Romney are not part of that organ, they have never voted to come in as personnel. So they have non, nonparting contracts. So they're not part of the association.
Oh, I see, isn't a part of the union.
Yep.
Right. They still have, they still have custodians, they just, yeah.
It's totally up to the personnel, they want to join. They, in the initial formation, well before my time, they never joined to come in, sometimes they've talked about it, um, but they decide they haven't wanted to come in, so.
They must be doing well.
Right, if they wanna work.
Uh, so there was a, there was a three point five percent salary increase, that was negotiated for one year. The healthcare that was negotiated with the teachers was done with the E S P at the same time. There were a few working conditions, uh, we added a couple class of, uh, not a class of employees, but some job descriptions of the behavior interventionist. And, uh, uh, I'm gonna call it more, uh, personal care attendant for students. And, uh, we added some extra pay for those folks because they have higher qualifications than a parent, parent educator needs. And we're trying to hire our own instead of contract out with outside providers on that. We think it's a win-win if we hire our own. But we can, we can keep them more in the district. There's also, uh, a couple other working conditions, and then some, uh, wordsmithing, but nothing huge, that was really cost based. Oh, the other thing I forgot, they wanted access to Vermont Employee Retirement System because they did not have access to it as an association. They had access to our four oh three B plans.
That would be the municipal.
The municipal, yep, exactly, so now they have access to all access to the school, so choose, it doesn't, it wasn't, there's an upfront cost for the whole, for all four schools split. But there isn't any cost ongoing for retirement, it's the same contribution, retirement contribution for the employee and the, well, the employee can do whatever they want in the four oh three B, but we always give six percent, so that's the same. Um, so it, I don't have a figure of what the actual increase cost is for Calis, but it's well within what we can afford. And, uh, it was, has been adopted already at, uh, Berlin and East Montclair, next Wednesday, U thirty-two will go down.
Okay.
If there's further questions, it's a year agreement, just like the teachers, because we're required to have all, all agreements cease next year.
And start that fund process all over again.
That's right.
If they're so good at it, they'll just be able to.
Right. This has been the cycle. Okay. Thank you.
Negotiations are always tricky.
Okay, I think we're ready for the action agenda. So five point one is to approve the E S P contract that Bill just spoke about.
So, so moved.
Any further discussion? Okay, so all in favor of approving E S P contract for academic year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty as negotiated by the negotiations committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, alright. And five point two is to approve, um, hiring Brian Monahan to represent us, to review the documents and.
The amendments.
Amendments to the warning and to represent us at a meeting with the school board.
Yes.
Select board.
Select board, sorry.
Let's say we are the school board.
I always do that.
Can I suggest you might just say retain Brian?
Yes, that was the word I was looking for.
Her services regarding the easement option and.
Use agreement.
Access agreements.
Well, there's three.
That's why I was trying to list three right there.
Right, the easement, the easement, the option, and.
Use agreement.
Use agreement.
Use agreement.
Three, there's three.
Use agreement, easement.
Option.
The option.
Yeah.
To retain Brian Monahan for services regarding the easement option and use agreement for the Calis school board, the Calis.
For the, for the Calis school board.
For the Calis. And you might wanna just add an other related.
Right, cover the last issue that we were talking about.
Right, and other issues related to this matter or something, just so you have a little bit, you know, tie yourselves into just.
Yeah, a little wiggle room is that what you.
Yeah, that's the worry, piggly wiggly room.
So, um, and I have, I've left mine without, we have to also, I'm gonna vote this out, designate an authorization, authorized agent to sign it.
Oh.
So, but that's, we need to accept it first.
Okay.
Also move, also move, got the motion, right.
Rick, Rick so moved it.
Right.
So.
To, to retain.
So you're gonna wanna do agreement, just because of the, in fact, my amendment you took from Denise.
Which.
No, you don't.
No, no.
Wait.
Well, yeah, absolutely, because this was very specific.
So approve.
Well, this is, this is very, very specific, so we can't, we can add something to it, you're right, and we would have to then.
Right, well, then you don't, then you don't wanna have to have a new letter, so you're, yeah.
That's right, so I, I would rather go straight with this, and if there's something else that we wanna add to it, then we ask Brian how we can do that.
You can, you can engage, you can do another engagement letter.
Does not the.
But it might be covered because of it all coming tied together.
I was gonna say, doesn't the, this warning, you know, the warning with the amendments fall under.
I think that falls under with respect to.
Regarding the Calis School District's conveyance.
Where you started talking about another issue in front of our, forget what it is, and I, normally I'd be right with Denise and saying, I, I am with Denise actually on this, if you want more wiggle room. If you want more wiggle room, we need a different letter.
Right, but you don't wanna have to wait.
Right.
Right, so I suggest, I think Dorothy's right.
And I think for the moment, we just are limited to.
Just go with it and then add another letter, and we approve it.
We, we, we need to get this done.
Done, yeah.
Yeah, let's do it.
So will you read our motion?
So Rick moved to approve, to retain Brian Monahan for services regarding easement option and use agreement for the Calis school board, now what do you wanna say about the warning?
No, just say that, and we, you don't need to say the warning, but if you say then we, I would authorize whomever you want who's sitting here tonight to sign it in your motion.
Yeah, that's part of the issue.
Rick, say who you'd like to authorize to sign it, and the board authorizes.
Dot, you're working with, I would authorize.
And the board authorizes.
Authorizes.
Dorothy Naylor.
Naylor to sign it?
Sign it as.
To act as agent on behalf of Calis.
Authorized agent.
Act as authorized agent on behalf.
On behalf of Calis School District.
Read it one more time, are you good?
I'm good, what about you?
I'm good.
Rest in peace.
Read it one more time.
No, 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 I'm good with it, I'm good with the wording.
You sure, Chris?
No, yeah, I'm good with the wording, yeah.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
So there's discussion.
Discussion, sorry, discussion of the motion.
My only, I'm for it, honest to goodness, I'm for it, I think it's a great idea to have somebody look at it, I think it's important to do that. The only hangup that I'm having is how much money is it gonna cost?
Yeah, yeah, me too.
Like, I'm freaking out because, like, I don't wanna spend a gajillion dollars on something that we may not even have needed to have happen.
It's protection, you don't know.
It's insurance policy number one, but I can't imagine it's using more than two hours, maybe four hours for coming travel.
Right, so we're really talking about under a thousand dollars.
So can we set that cap?
No, I would not, I think it's not gonna take much time, but it would, I mean, honestly.
You're talking about insurance policies.
We're going to, we're going, we're going to be, you know, we're going to be paying Scott Cameron, we're gonna be paying, paying somebody to do this, so it's a matter of, this is just a, an independent source, so I mean, I, I, I mean, I think this is well worth every dollar we put in it. And it should not be that many hours of work, so.
Right.
I mean, if we get prepared properly, um, I, just the meeting alone won't even take an hour, I can't imagine.
Then we're gonna pay him to, I mean, we're gonna pay him at least two hours there, even if the meeting takes fifteen minutes, because he's gonna drive from Burlington.
I, I, I get that.
Right.
I should give him, every time I get a plumber, pass five hundred bucks.
So that meeting alone's gonna cost us five hundred dollars.
Yeah, probably.
This is, this is definitely insurance force, either, it's either, or drop, kind of drop the idea, I mean, it's, we're going to pay Scott Cameron, we're gonna pay somebody.
I mean, the town attorney already drafted documents, the town's already paid that.
It's already done, yeah.
And, and it could be, I, I, I'm just, this is just a suggestion, it's not necessarily what I want, but it could be that we would meet with him over the phone. And that would, we wouldn't even have travel time.
Think considering how, how much everything else costs, this is.
Yeah.
We would have to, if we do that, we would, we'd have to call and meet, I mean, how would we do that as a.
We're gonna have a meeting anyway.
We'd have one, well, what, I mean, if you did a phone, we'd have to have one representative.
No, I would. We would have, we, we would have a special meeting, we would each warn, special meetings with Jim Barlow, and Brian would be on the phone.
Got you, so it'd be a phone, I got you.
You could, yeah, he could do a telephone.
Mm-hmm.
It's never as good as in person, but you could do that.
Yeah.
I would pay him the two hours to come and be here, face to face myself, it's, it's.
Face to face is always better.
Yeah.
If you can. It really is.
I agree, I, I don't disagree, I just.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great, a good question.
The money just, it bugs me.
I know.
Cause it has nothing to do with the kids.
Well, it does in the long run, right, because we're talking about, you know.
It's a, it's a big asset.
All of this is, you know, there's all this thing of, in the Act forty-six, you, people aren't talking about the kids, they're talking about this and this and that, well, that's all, you know, the kids need the building and they need their teachers and they need.
They need to be able to come to the property.
And, and all of that will be, all of that, as long as the school is being used as an educational place, will continue.
Right.
This is solely for not being used as an educational.
But beyond that, Chris, we have met as a board and decided that we think these documents are a good idea. We've now also met with our town, and the voters have said they think it's a good idea, so I think we're beyond the question of whether it's a good idea. We've now also met with our town and the voters have said they think it's a good idea, so I think we're beyond the question of whether it's a good idea.
No, and like I said, I don't, I'm not saying whether it's a, I'm, I'm just saying is, is, is meeting with another lawyer required?
Right.
I thought we had this discussion.
Yeah.
That was, and it, it was really about the money.
That was my question at the beginning too, yeah, but I feel like.
I'm gonna call the question.
It's fine.
Okay. All right then, we have a motion on the table. All in favor, please say aye.
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 It's aye. I mean, I don't wanna not be, it's, it's just the money thing that just bugs me, I just want it to be known.
All opposed. And any abstentions? All right, thank you.
Well, I guess we say goodbye to the visitors. Oh, don't, what do we have?
Right, unless you wanna hear, so prove our board orders.
Board orders.
Where are they?
Yes.
They've been signed.
So we have board orders.
In the amount of nineteen, for, for like three, yeah, nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety-six.
When you guys get done early.
And eighty-six cents.
Yes.
And then a second dash for twenty-eight thousand eighty point ninety-seven. Start at six? But yeah, I have people that don't get out of work until six, so.
I know.
So I moved to approve the board orders. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then future agenda items, small schools grant in May or June, what else?
Um, fund.
Kat was going to discuss.
Balance also.
And personnel issue, or, I mean, follow up on.
Well, we.
We're gonna go into executive session to talk about that. But we'll be doing that in future agenda, correct? She's talking about future agenda items, so we'll still be having.
Possible hiring of personnel.
There'll be some possible hiring of personnel, let's just say.
Yeah, let's say possible hiring of personnel.
Personnel, work communication? Sorry, do you?
I'll do it.
Thanks, Michelle. Dorothy, our permanent board communicator.
Okay, and you entered the executive session to discuss personnel issues at?
Seven sixteen.
We should have recognized that as a form of.